Kelly, would you mind establishing a quorum?
I think I'm going to pass the honors to Ms. Bellis.
Sorry. Force of habit. Force of habit.
Trustee Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
Vice President Lathan.
Here.
President Lewis.
Here. So we will now enter into closed session. And so...
So, okay, now appropriately, we will enter into open session. So Ms. Bellus, can you establish forum?
Yes. Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Vice President Lathan?
Here.
President Lewis?
Here. All right, so reports on closed session, there are none. So we will continue with the flag salute. Trustee Rocha, would you mind leading the flag salute?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, on to section D, approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of June 28, 2023.
Please approve.
I have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and proper second. Any discussion? Okay, so I have a motion on the floor and properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Item E, approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting on August 2nd, 2023. Any discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
All right, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, next up is superintendent report.
Yes, good evening. So now that school is in session, we're busy preparing for intercession, which will take place during our fall break in October. And we are going to run intercession at all 14 elementary sites, hoping to serve 70 to 80 students at each site. There will be STEM activities, also physical activity for the students, so looking forward to that. Our transportation plan, which we talked about previously at a meeting, we're moving along with that, and we're going to include an update in the Friday board letter. I'm not sure this week, but by next week. And we've rolled out Carisolus, which is a free referral system for students, families, and staff, where they can contact Carisolus, and within 24 hours, they will be connected with a mental health expert to provide that help. And again, it's for students, their families, and staff. And finally, we are busy balancing classes. Now, we always anticipate who's going to show up for the first days of school, but it isn't until they actually get here that we know that we have all of the teachers in the right places. So we're making some minor adjustments, and that should be completed by the end of next week. Those are all of my reports for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Yep.
The, I think you said Carisolus, but I wasn't.
Carisolus.
Yes. Is that a service that we're paying for, or is that like?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Sorry, oh, yeah.
I just want to check, I know that other district is really short on teachers. Have we had been able to meet our, or are we that short too?
We are nowhere near that short.
Good.
No, I've heard some of those stories too, and that's really startling, no. We're doing really, really well in that department, and I want to thank our HR department, both classified and certificated. They worked all summer long, multiple hours, making sure that we filled as many vacancies as possible.
Good, thank you.
Trustee Lathan?
Thank you for sharing the Healthy Kids Survey in one of our Friday packets. Can you give us an update on what, what do we do with the information? Like, what do sites do, principals, teachers, once they have the information? And how do they?
I'm trying to think if, if I can talk about this, if it's not on the agenda, I think I can. They get it, they get disseminated by site, and they review it as a site, as a, the staff, and also with their school site council when they're making their plans moving forward.
Thank you.
So I did have a couple questions. So for Carisolus, as well as the, the activity for the intercession activities, how will we be communicating that with the community and families?
The, all schools are having it on their district website, they're sending out communication. We will be placing it on our social media pages as well and on our website.
And it will be multilingual?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, public comments. Section 5A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda. We have two. Velma Wilson?
Welcome back to school. I know, you know, it's quiet in here, I can't do it, it's too quiet. But first, I have to say thank you so much to the staff and everyone that came out and supported the 11th Annual Stuff the Bus School Supply Giveaway. We served, there was approximately 3,163 students that registered. We did run out of backpacks, but we know and we see that the need is great. So I'm encouraging you all that can, think about, the 12th Annual School Supply Giveaway is coming up. It is already scheduled, it's always the first Saturday in the month of August. And anything that you all can do to collaborate with one of our own that went through these schools and see the needs. She's very meticulous on how she organizes this event. We have to go to state warriors, dancers come, and then just engage. And just a lot of families that were out there and enjoyed an amazing time. Just a reminder, this for the middle school students and middle schools, this is back to school week. So tomorrow, the middle schools will be celebrating their back to school. So all the middle schools will be on early release on Friday. But parents and families, please come out and make sure that you are learning and being engaged on what's happening at your particular middle school site. It's an amazing year, an amazing time to be in education, and we want to make sure that we encourage parent involvement and engagement on all levels. But come tomorrow to make sure that you are at the middle school sites for the back to school nights. And please reference your school for the particular time. Most of them will be starting at around 6:00 PM. So please be there, they will be doing Title I presentations with the principals, and a lot of information, community, as we are definitely rolling out the community schools models. There's a lot of resources that the school sites want to make sure. So we invite all the school board trustees to be out there and see what's the amazing things that are happening and the changes that are happening here at the schools. Don't believe the hype, don't believe the narratives, until you actually out there and you seeing the work that's being done at these school sites.
Thank you. So next up, Nancy McGee?
Good evening. So again, my name is Nancy Uzable McGee. I'm just a concerned parent. My child attends John Mayer Elementary, and it's not really a concern with anything of the teachers, it's just with class sizes and in particular combo classes. So this year, I walked up to school on the first day and found out that my son was placed in a second and third grade combo class. Usually, that's not a concern for, I guess, most parents or people in general. But for me, and how I feel about my son receiving an education here in an unclassified school district, I would like to see something done in regards to ensuring that kiddos are in classes that are for them and that their instruction time isn't being divided by, you know, one grade or another due to, I guess, a congestion of students in second and third grade, particularly at my school. Now, I know my school is taking every effort to ensure that my child receives an equal education to that of his peers in the regular third grade classes. And thankfully, he is in a, in a class full of kids that have pretty good behaviors and therefore hopefully won't cause any disruptions and therefore take away from the little time that he's now given for his third grade class. But I, I just want to know what the board or what the school district in general is doing about these combo classes, because my, I feel for my child, and I know many parents think their kids are special, but for my child, he was doing really well last year as a second grader. He's reading at a four, a fourth grade level, a little bit more than that. And I'm worried that with that, given in those classroom settings, that there may not be attention given to some of these kids, given that they're dividing the classroom time between second grade and third grade. His teacher's amazing, his principal, yes, I've talked to both of them. But I just want to hear from the board in that regard and what they're doing about helping out schools to ensure that there's congestion in certain grades, how they can either add more teachers or rework classroom sizes so that each kid is in their proper grade with their proper, with their peers and not combined into classes like that. Just, I just want to make sure that my child's receiving an equal amount of instruction time in his grade areas and his subject areas as his peers in other classes.
If you leave your contact information with Ms. Wisely, someone can, will be in contact with you. Thank you so much.
And then also Superintendent Anello, if you can follow up with, I don't know who else wants to know but me, like what the response is, or Ms. Wisely follow up with us and just let us know like how, what the response is.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So moving on to 5B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. We have one, Michael Sajhorn?
Thank you, good evening. I've played rugby all over the world, in Queensland, in Iraq, well, actually Saudi Arabia. And I went out to the Deer Valley Field to see what the conditions were. And the conditions in Saudi Arabia were much better than the field conditions are at my own high school. I have a concern that the PE department has had to eliminate students from using those fields on the south side of the campus because they're dangerous. They're hard pan, they're weed infested, they have thorns, they haven't been watered in lord knows how long. And I, I do think that the way we manage turf, meaning grass, needs a relook and maybe recruiting and maybe a little bit of, a little more combined care. It's bad when the athletic directors for our schools and our PE department chair will not allow our students to use five acres of the Deer Valley Fields. So I'm asking, I had a really great conversation with Ken Turnage. I believe the stadium thing, as messed up as it is, I think what we need to do is have graduation there and then have the contractor start in June, you know, and give us a new field in August. But truthfully, a little more attention needs to be paid on that really needed field space at Deer Valley High School. It needs to be scraped, disced, pressed, seeded, aerated, watered during the fall months and the winter months, which is the time you go grass in the Bay Area, not in the summer where it's, it doesn't work. So I would like your assistance and your recognition that, that those spaces, instructional spaces, need to be fixed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There'll probably be more meetings in the coming months that, that mention bond type stuff than that don't. And I wanted to say that I appreciate your time and attention to these matters and that I appreciate the indulgence in allowing me to give presentations that give a little bit more background than maybe is essential. But I think it's, it's things that are important to kind of grow the understanding of the bond program as a whole and some of the decisions that are coming up. So I appreciate that. Let's see. So what do we have here? Am I doing this right? Perfect. So the first slide is kind of an overview again of the district's bond program. It's a relatively active bond program, not as active as many in the, in the county. But you've had two successful elections in the past 15 years, issued bonds on seven, new money bonds on seven occasions. Spent $160 million or more on, on facility improvements in the last 10, 15 years. And the tax rates have been in the sixth, mid-sixties to mid-80 dollar range per 100,000. So the concept I want to get across there is bond program about a handful of things, getting the authorization to sell bonds, selling the bonds, spending the money, and paying for the bonds. So we're trying to keep track of all those and make sure you have a program that stays consistent there. The history of the bond elections, you've seen this before, two successful, 2008, 2012. 2012, it's been a long time since you've had a bond election here. You also note here the percentage pass, 62%, right? Little bit over the 55% you need, but not comfort, not, not overwhelmingly over. So they, these bond elections are always going to be tough here. Also note, you won in June and you won in November. So it's not just November that's the perfect date. Capital expenditures, you've seen this before. Bonds are the vast majority of money you're spending on capital here. Been spending 15, 20 million dollars a year, something like that over the past 10 years. That's a decent burn rate for a district with a tax base this size and with the, the other, your ability to get projects in the ground. Might be able to move a little faster than that, but that's, you know, that's a pace that makes sense for a district like this. The tax rates I mentioned, you look kind of the history, this is since the first bond were passed. You see after 2013, 14, that was after the first 2012 measure, measure B bond issue was issued. You see 80, 76, 98, right, mid-eighties, mid, that's, that's the, the range you've been working from. And we shared this the last time. You see within the SFID, about median, a little bit below. So the people here are not kind of overtaxed on a, you know, on, relative to other, to other school districts in the county. These are the issuances of bonds over time. You see just about every year, 2008, 2009, 2010, 13, 15, 17, and 20. $98 million worth of bonds outstanding. Each of the issues has their own particular characters, characteristics. We're looking at this 2013 issue, June 2013. There's $22 million of bonds outstanding. And those bonds are going to be call, or started to be callable just this year. So once you reach this call date, you tell investors, hey, we're not going to call the bonds away from you for 10 years. Once you reach that date and you can refund, we take a look at the interest rates. You can see we have a trend up in interest rates here at the end, very right, this 30 years. But if you look at that blue line at the top, the 30-year treasury, the longest bonds, it's a pretty good benchmark, that it hasn't been below, that in the last 10 years, it's been below 4%. But before that, it was much higher than that. So we still characterize this as a relatively low interest rate environment, especially for long-term bonds. So it's a decent opportunity, plus we're doing something called moving in on the yield curves. I won't, I won't get into too much detail on that. But there are other advantages to rates as you move forward. I talked before about the, the callability. The original call date is on the right. So the bonds that issued in 2008 became callable, refunded them. Almost all those bonds. 2009, that call date came, refunded those. The 2010 issuance is a little bit of a special issue. You're paying, you're getting some subsidies on that. We don't want to refund that one. So now this 2013 issue's coming to be refunded. You know, we want to take it as they come. Here's a list of kind of the interest rates that you're paying now are in that Series A column. The current market is on the current market column. And you can see throughout most of that, we've got 50 basis points to 100 basis point of an advantage. There are a few maturities where at this point in time, there's a disadvantage, we're not going to be refunding bonds where there's not an advantage to doing it. So market's moving all the time. I'd like to turn all those things to black by the time we do an issue. We, we don't know where the market's going to be. We've got some standards set into this resolution that says the district won't sell refunding bonds unless they create what they call 4% PV savings. So the payments need to be reduced by 4% top to bottom in the financing. So won't do it unless that happens. Won't incur any costs on this financing until we finalize it. How a refunding works, district assesses that conditions are right and establishes its plan of finance. We issue new bonds. That's what we're authorizing tonight. We use the proceeds of that bonds to pay off the old bonds. And we get savings if the debt service on the refunding bonds is less than the debt service on the existing bonds. And how people benefit is in the future years, five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, the amounts that they owe is less, the tax rate required will be a little bit less. So it doesn't benefit the general fund, but it doesn't cost the general fund. 1.12 million, I didn't know how many parcels there were. I wished I had found out and I didn't find out. We'll be able to report back through the list. So the savings of this financing, if we issue like $20 million worth of bonds approximately, is going to be $48,000 per year. It's not going to make a huge impact on an individual's tax base unless we concentrate it in one year, which I don't recommend. But it'll save 1.1 million dollars over time, which is a significant amount for a bond program of this size. The resolution that's before you tonight authorized the issuance of the bonds, subject to certain limitations, right? We have to meet certain savings criteria. We have to pay costs of issuance that are less than those reported in the, in the resolution. It assigns some discretion to the district administration, Stephanie and Liz. If the, right, even if we hit the 4%, but it's bad market timing for whatever reason, we won't be recommending it. The district will have, be able to make a call to move forward or not move forward so they have some discretion. It approves certain documents as to form, what they call the preliminary official statement is a, is a disclosure document that goes out to investors. We have a firm that's a legal firm that's writing that for us. There's a bond purchase agreement between us and Raymond James, who's going to be buying the bonds from us. It's my job to make sure we negotiate good fee from them, that we negotiate good interest rates from them. We'll have the county on the line, too. There's a lot of independent eyes looking at these things. Provide certain required estimates for both out-of-pocket costs and interest costs. That's a state law matter. And it certifies the district by with certain ongoing responsibilities, right? We're issuing tax-exempt bonds here. That means that the person who buys the bonds, it doesn't pay taxes on the, on the interest payments they get, so they're able to lend you money at a lower rate. But it means somebody's making money and the federal government's not getting their cut. And so there's got to be rules when, when that happens. So the basic rules are that you're using the money, you know, for good public benefit projects and that you're spending the money quickly after you, after you borrow it and that you're obeying all these other arbitrage related rules. The financing schedule, financing works just like any other financing. We authorize the bonds, we approve, we prepare the disclosure documents, we get a rating in place, then we set the interest rates, then we sign all the closing documents and then we review what the ongoing responsibilities are. All of that will work through over the next couple of months, assuming that the market hangs in there with us. So we were approving the resolution tonight. I have a rating meeting next week, be in the market two weeks after that. We're not rushing this to get in the market. If this, if this was producing general fund savings, we would be moving more aggressively on it. We're just kind of working through the steps. Two months is a pretty normal timeline for that process. The options, I wanted to emphasize it, you know, you're under no obligation to refund these bonds. If somebody said, hey, let's wait till we get much better interest rates and much higher savings, that's not an unreasonable position. But you could approve the resolution tonight, kind of move forward with the terms. You could say, hey, let's, let's pass this. I don't have enough information to, to, you know, move forward. I'd be happy to come back. I'd be happy to write more memos. We wanted to get this resolution on the agenda pretty quickly with rates moving up. We could postpone the approval till you get those questions answered, or we could choose not to refund the bonds. A lot, there are districts who say, and it's more districts who are issuing bonds on a more regular basis, districts who say, hey, you know, I don't want to spend the time on a bond financing when I'm not already doing a bond financing. So if you're San Francisco Unified and you're doing a bond issue every year, you say, hey, let's, let's only look at refunding opportunities when we're doing that. Here, we're issuing a little less often. Here, there might be a little benefit to saying, hey, we're looking out for you, the taxpayer, since you're asking for the taxpayer's support. They want to put some money into this to advertise the results, right? So there are some other reasons beyond just the savings to go into it. So that's the piece on the refunding. And then I also wanted to kind of hit, to remind you that we're moving forward on this potential 2024 bond, right? I'm the one talking now, but right, Stephanie and Liz are doing a lot of the, most of the work on it.
So let's maybe see if you have any questions on the refunding and then we can kind of go into talking more about potentially putting the, a new bond on, on the, on the ballot in March.
Yeah. I'm just wondering why we decided now's the good time to go for this versus maybe like a year or two or even three years ago?
The, if you look at the, it has to do with the call feature of these bonds. So these bonds, when they were issued in 2013, we told the investors, we won't refund the, the bonds until, won't call them away from them until 2023. So August 1st, 2023 was the first opportunity to, to call those bonds. If you look at the interest rate movement in the last, you know, year or so, you know, it would have been nice to have been able to do it a year ago.
And those other bonds that we have that have already reached their call date, did we already do a refund process on those?
We refunded the, the, the Series B bonds and the Series A bonds together. We left some bonds not unrefunded. That's the, the $3.3 million. It was, that's a technicality. The couponing that went into the transaction made those non-savers. But we've been taking them as they come up. So the first two, we took. The third one, we're paying about a percent and a half interest on it, so no opportunity to create savings there. And now it's time for the fourth one.
Okay. That's all the questions I got.
Yeah. Three years ago, we weren't allowed to do it. And three months ago.
Just wasn't a good time.
Yeah.
We've done this before, so I know.
Refunded bonds in 2007.
So I know it's come to us before. And we do it at a time when we know we can get something back.
Yes.
Or reduce it.
And ideally, right, I, I think if we were in a process of issuing bonds every couple of years, you know, maybe we'd wait for that issue. But I, I think the timing's pretty good and I, I think the advantage of telling the, the voters, hey, we're watching out for you is a, is a positive message.
So, you know, I think the only, so yeah. So I think my only question is, I want to make sure that the public understands because, again, you're using very technical language. I totally understand why. We as a board probably likely understand everything. But I also want to make sure that the public is able to consume. So once we make a decision to move whatever direction, I want to make sure that we are providing some language to the public that is digestible.
Yeah. Maybe both in, in planning and in retrospect, right? Hey, we just did this and you should notice this in your tax bill starting next year.
Exactly. Because again, the goal is to be stewards of, you know, good stewards of our city's resources. And so, you know, folks want to make sure that they are making wise decisions. So that's my comment. Any other questions?
Just a comment to follow up with what you're saying. I think it's important for, for the community to understand, but also, to be honest, I haven't. Maybe the other board members have because they have more experience, been educated on any of what you're talking about. So like, it sounds like another language and it, I would like, I would have liked to have some kind of session where we learn, those of us who need to, more specifically about what you're talking about before we make a decision. That would have been my recommendation.
All right. The last couple of slides in the presentation, kind of talk about the future, right? We've had a couple of presentations on bond-related things. And, and in June, I came, made a presentation talking about, hey, if you want to improve your facilities and your needs are in the hundreds of millions of dollars range, right, that local bond is the only way to do it. Other people are having, other people in the county are having elections more frequently than you. They're levying higher taxes, they're spending more per kid, all of those type of things. So in June, we talk about the facility needs, the idea of a local bond election was appropriate funding source and a plan, we kind of outlined a plan to move forward to be ready for March if March is the date we want. We don't know that yet. They, we're need to act by December 8th if we want to put something on in March. That, what we will act on will be an amount, a list of projects. And yeah, it's an amount and a list of projects, all the documents that, that put it on the ballot, put it on the ballot. And so we talked about the financing mechanism. Now we're talking a little bit about the projects. The next slide will have to do with the projects. And then we'll talk about the political atmosphere and then we'll talk about the legals, right? And so those are the kind of four steps that we want to bring together. So this is the second of those four. And the goal would be to have a proposal to you in end of October, early November, coming up the next couple of months. So this, you know, we talked about 180, 200, 220, 240 as being a kind of size that might work for bonds. You know, we want to wait till we hear a little bit about the political atmosphere, you know, what the public will support. It's, you know, you're never going to be able to fund everything that you need right now. Even if we had the money, we couldn't do it right away. And we'll get $0 if we don't put a bond on the ballot, or if we put a bond on the ballot that fails. So anything's better than zero. And so we're trying to keep that in mind in putting a plan together. So this is a plan that, you know, roughs out at about $250 million. You see that it breaks things down between basic infrastructure and athletic play structure, athletic fields and play structures. We've gotten some advice that maybe a separate bond measure for each might be something that, you know, you, you might be able to get 55% for both if you do that. Yet some people voting for your basic infrastructure say, hey, I wouldn't otherwise vote for this if it had fields in it. So we broke it down on that basis. But for $250 million, you get about $8 million per elementary school, about $9 million per middle school, probably a little bit more for the schools that added more needs, a little bit less for the schools that had less needs, fewer needs, fewer dollars' worth of needs, maybe. A little bit for the high school, probably not all the high schools need, you know, 10, 20, 30 million dollars there. And then I added a, a piece at the end that, you know, may fall out at some point. But if you had a $2 million budget for technology or for emergency needs, that'd be $16 million worth of the budget here. But it would be somebody who wouldn't put yellow tape across a bathroom because it couldn't be fixed or anything like that. Small items could be taken care of out of this pot of money or technology or anything like that. So, you know, Liz is going to be talking a little bit more detail about what each of those amounts buy, but this is kind of what we've been thinking about in terms of roughing out a, a budget for this.
So I've been working with Ken on specific sites and what we've done, like for some sites, we've already done some roofing or we've done some HVAC repairs. So we're working on each site, kind of dollars on how much we'll need for each site. In addition to a facility master plan was done in 2018, so we are referring to that because much of what was in there still needs to be done. And so we are referring to that as well, as far as what, what was suggested in there, looking at the dollars that they had there versus what today's dollars will give you. So at the next board meeting, Ken will be here to do a presentation both on some of the projects that MNO has already done throughout the district, in addition to sort of the things that he sees that need to be done, whether it's fields, HVAC, roofing. We, we're pretty much looking at everything and then we just prioritize what sites and what needs to be done. We also on the agenda tonight, that's in conjunction with the bond, is Tramitola, who is a campaign person that will help us sort of do some of the strategies with the community and the political piece and sort of frame how, how we want to present this and work with a, a survey, somebody to come out and do the survey with our community to see what they can stomach as far as. can stomach, as far as what types of projects, is it athletics, is it infrastructure, is it 200 million, is it 100 million, that kind of thing. So we'll be bringing to you a company that will also be doing a survey, which we just did a survey in 2020, I believe. And so there is some interest in maybe kind of, maybe not doing an extensive survey, but sort of seeing what the temperature is out there.
What is the experience that you all have had with engaging the community around what they want to see in our schools? So not just the surveying of whether or not people will vote for 100 million or 200 million bond, but literally like what the facility looks like for their children, like, in what ways have you all engaged people in that conversation in the past?
Well, in this district, I have not. In my previous districts, we've done a lot of, what we did road shows, is we went out to school sites, we went out to PTA meetings and talked with the community and sort of did, you know, a list of things that each individual school site needed. And that works, and in the case of this district, we definitely could potentially calendar those. We are on a tight timeline if you all decide to go in March. But the needs of some of the sites in this district are so great. I mean, coming from the fields of safety, I think that we could probably make the list of sort of the needs, and it'll be, the dollar amount will be larger than we'll even probably go out for. So we just have to balance the expectations on what is expected and...
And it's worth noting that a facility program like this is roll out over next eight years in '16 and '24. So if you're one of the elementary schools there that's got an $8 million budget for eight years from now, what you are going to want in eight years is going to, might be a lot different than what you have now. It's a balance.
Thank you for sharing your experience, and thank you for explaining that. I really would, personally, would love to hear from the community about what they want. People have some amazing innovative ideas that we might not think about. We were talking about, for example, the young people who, you know, it was hot outside, and they were experiencing whatever from the heat. And like, there are some climate change things we can do, like, you know, structures and things like that. So I just want to make sure we involve people from multiple perspectives around what can and can't happen. And I think it'll get people excited when they know their voices are heard to actually vote for it. So, and like you, because I was engaged in kind of very similar work, but it's just getting people excited and hearing them is important.
And that's when we take advantage of you all and get some key community members to help us, you know, the administrators, we've been talking to the administrators to kind of get them excited and to start talking at their school site councils. And with this size district, you know, my district that I did it before, the last two were like a quarter of the size, so it's a little bit easier to kind of get out to every area. And with the size of the district, we need to divide and conquer, and we can definitely, so I'm trying to put together some sort of like talking points, so that people have talking points, so that when they're doing their back-to-school nights, which we didn't make, but those types of things at the school sites that they can share with the community and get some feedback.
Yeah, and I agree. I think a lot of it is our responsibility too, but I think, and I think it's the access which is challenging, right? Even as an educator, I find it very hard to access our schools when I'm a board member. So I think that's one. But two, also utilizing teaching staff and other staff. We had a bond measure when I was a principal, and a lot of teachers walked doors, and they knocked, and they shared the brochures, and they were able to talk about it because they knew exactly what was needed. And then we also had community forums.
We will absolutely need as many community members, teachers, classified staff to get this passed.
Yeah, I just want to echo, yeah, Vice President Lathan's point that, yeah, because our timeline is so tight, right, I think it is important to get stakeholders from the community engaged as quickly as possible, especially at the stage right now before we get to the bond campaigning point where now we have a lot more regulations and things to think about in terms of, you know, what we can and can't say and do as a district. And so having ownership there, I think, is an important piece, because we can come up with the best plan possible, but if voters are seeing that for the first time at the ballot box, it's going to be too much to unpack in that moment.
Mr. Chair, I really like the inclusion that was given to us, which is the inspection tool. At least, it gives us an idea of where the schools are and what their needs are. And then we go, having that plus what parents are looking at, what their needs, and teachers in the rig of that particular school, combined it all, I think is a good way of going and finding out what we need to replace.
No other questions or comments? And I think, you know, I think the message is fairly, oh, sorry, I don't know if you can hear me. It's fairly clear that I think for the board, it's very important that we have community voice and input. So, you know, whatever decision is made, that the community is involved, they're informed, and they play a role in whatever direction we decide to move forward with.
I agree. Thank you.
Next up, item seven, hearings, there are none. Section eight, public presentations, there are none. Section nine, consent items. I will entertain a mo, are there any that need to be polled or want to be polled?
Yes.
I can go first. I did just want to comment on K, because I know we touched on that previously before, and on here, it does say that they're going to form this communication strategy, and is that going to be coming back to us to be part of that development of that strategy? I guess I just, you know, where are they getting their priorities from, and where are they pulling, you know, what are they using to evidence some of the strategies that they're going to think about when creating this public information campaign?
So first, they're going to be working with the survey from the community, and then input from Stephanie and I, and probably Ken. So we will gather all the information and pass it on to them to help with strategy. We can definitely hold other meetings with input from any other person in the district and the board members to give input on, once we get to the point where we, how do we want to communicate this out?
And then I wasn't clear, are they doing the survey or someone else doing the survey?
Somebody else is doing the survey, but they work closely with them.
Got it. And that hasn't come to us and is not...
Has not.
Okay, so that's...
So he's working with the survey people right now to see what that might look like.
Got it, okay. So they'll be helping the survey people develop the survey as well?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
Picking back on Trustee Hernandez, I saw the, how do you pronounce it? Tramitola? Tramitola. And I was wondering, I looked them up on their website and everything, and I'm just wondering, because we didn't have an option to choose, and this is a big project, do we have to move forward today? I feel like we need to look at, like, we have RFPs even for the board, you know, consultants to help us create a board governance model and all of that. So I'm not sure why this company was chosen versus another company. We didn't have the option to talk about it. Because values are important. Values, what we believe as a board, and we haven't had that opportunity to have that discussion.
So in this case, one, we were on a tight timeline, but two, we have had a consultant that's worked in this district for many, many, many years. His name is Conal Lent, and that's who we originally reached out to, because he has so much history. Him and Dave both have worked in this district for a lot of years, so we've already had a relationship. He is stepping aside from doing this type of work and has been working sort of with him, sort of, and managing, helping him pass on to his clients, and so that's how that relationship started, is a recommendation from him. But we can definitely go out and do an RFP. That's definitely an option. It's just the tight timeline, so just something to consider. If we do want to do a March bond election, we just have to consider the timeline. So that's, that would be up to the board.
So on 09B, Atkinson-Handelson Legal Services, I just need clarification, are we increasing the PO from 220,000 to 235, so that's a $15,000 increase? Or are we increasing it to 235,000? Like, we're having a new, I'm not sure what that meant.
No, it's increase just the 15,000.
15,000, perfect. And, thank you. And then 9L, Certificated Human Resources, what's partial resignation, Dr. Martinez?
If I'm understanding the particular situation, it was an individual who's working full-time, and then through course of reduction, they released part of their position. So we're not holding that for them.
Thank you. And I don't know, I know at one point, months ago, we talked about, we had head nods, but maybe we need to do something formal, when I asked if it will be helpful for us to have demographic information of folks who are resigning and/or exit interview information, and folks went, yeah, but we never, we haven't received it, so I don't know where we are. But I'm just interesting, interested because people are needing jobs, but people are leaving. So I'm like, why, you know, like, what's going on? I would be interested to know, like, what the culture is and why folks are leaving.
I don't recall there being consensus by the board, but we can put that as an item for discussion.
Okay. I remember asking, and everyone shook their head, but I agree, like, we need to say yes or no.
Yes.
All right, do you want to...
I was just going to say, the report tells you that they either have another job or that they're decided to move on.
But that doesn't tell us, I actually don't know that, and it's...
On the report, it says termination.
Exit interviews, you know from being in HR, can be often helpful, so that we can understand. Maybe it's just someone got another job somewhere, and maybe it's actually something different, and then we could help, you know, fix it. So that's why I'm asking those questions. But we can put it on an agenda item. And then service agreement with Wellness Together, I don't see a scope of work on there. Did I overlook it? I looked at several times, but I could have overlooked it. I didn't see a number of students, number of staff on the contract.
What letter is that? I'm sorry.
9X.
Which one?
9X.
Director Wisely?
Yeah, so the Wellness Together contract is through our SB HIP grant, and it's going to serve Carmen Dragon, Fremont, Jack London, Lone Tree, Marsh, John Meere, Sutter, and Turner. And it will provide mental health clinicians. Those are the remaining elementary schools that need those mental health clinicians. It will help us come to 100% clinicians across our elementary schools. Those clinicians will serve eight to 10 students.
Okay. I see that in the, in the kind of narrative, but I don't see it in the contract, so that's, I was just curious about it. And then 9Y, for parent family engagement. Do we have a family engagement strategy here?
Yeah. So our local school sites work with their school site councils on engagement, engagement of their students, of their parents. So their school site councils work together to identify goals that are specific to the needs of their specific site, and they invite vendors, sometimes vendors come in and are able to serve those needs. So in this case, Velma Wilson is doing parent engagement at Dallas Ranch. She has been doing it for some time, and there has been great return with the parents on site who are engaging in the PTA, the DLAC, I'm sorry, the ELAC on campus. So that's helping them meet those school site plan goals of parent engagement.
Thank you. Do we have a district?
I think that's contained in the LCAP. All, the LCAP, the activities that we're going to engage in as a district are there.
So I guess I'm asking, what is it? Because it just feels like, when I read some of the contracts, we're just throwing, like, we got a parent here, we got someone here at this school doing this, and I don't see the cohesiveness, and so I'm just trying to understand how it's all working together.
I think part of that is we allocate, a lot of districts do not pass down to schools any of their supplemental and concentration funding. We do with specific goals. One of those is parent engagement. That's how the district drives it, is through funding, and then the sites, through their school site council, decide how to use that funding to meet the goal of parent engagement.
Okay, that, okay. Just from a strategy standpoint, it doesn't sound very strategic. Sounds just like we're throwing spaghetti at the wall, so that's it for me.
Ms. Wisely? It's the school site funding, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so the school site...
They make the decision, and that's their fun.
Yeah, that's part of the local control funding, is that the school site council, they do meet regularly. I got to say that Director Dacus does a great job training our site administrators and providing training to our school site councils so they understand their role, so they can be good stewards of the money. And then they do look at quite a bit of data on a regular basis in these meetings to make sure that they're being strategic about targeting these goals and then having success with the goals.
I guess what feels interesting is that, I know we've had conversations up here about parent or family engagement strategies, and so it just feels like a disconnect, right? Because you have, we have to approve it, so I know it's a site discretion, but we have to say yes or no. And it doesn't feel like there's a cohesive goal for us yet around parent engagement, so I just, I'm curious to know. It just feels like a disconnect about what we know and what is actually happening at the school site.
Ms. Wisely, if we were to say no, then that council would have to, I mean, they would have to go through a process again.
We would have to buy, we would have to reject it in writing with specific reasons. It would go back to the school site council to remedy it and before it comes back to the board.
All right, I do have a parent comment card for this, for this exact item, item 9Y. Ms. Ayesha West?
Hello, good evening, everyone. It's great to see so many familiar faces. I've seen you guys at a lot of local events, so I'm here tonight in support of Velma Wilson, who is a warrior, a champion for children. I've seen her firsthand on campus, working with children, getting involved and being able to connect with children when admin and teachers couldn't do anything. If you guys were able to witness the work that she does at Dallas Ranch and at Black Diamond, I have nieces and nephews that attend the school, and a lot of times, the parents are just like, you know, we can't deal with, you know, they don't understand, they don't understand. And they bring, you know, Ms. Velma, and things magically get resolved because she's able to relate to them on a level that some of the teachers just can't. She's in the community, they see her, they feel seen, they feel heard, and I definitely think it is a valuable, valuable position that we, I wish we could double her. I don't even go to those schools. I go to, my kids go to Park. But it is such a value. I'm also a PTA president, I'm on school site council, you know, so these are services that our children need. I'm out there boots on the ground every single day in my schools with my kids. And it's really important that we have warriors out there in the field that are dedicated to our children. Her kids are graduated and gone, and she's still out here making a difference in the community. So I hope you guys consider, you know, keeping her on as long as she will stay. But her work that she does in the community is endless, at night, early in the morning, for, you know, next to nothing. So I have my son here, he attends Park. Did you want to say something about Ms. Velma?
Well, you just took the words out of my mouth.
Oh, all of them? Okay. How do you feel about Ms. Velma, the work that she does?
How do I feel?
Yeah. How much of the work does she do?
You know, she helps a lot of schools stuff, and she's really, really nice. That's it.
And this is my daughter, Callie. She also attends Park Middle School. She's a eighth grade.
Ms. Velma helps me a lot. She helps, she gives me opportunities to speak in the community, and she helps out a lot at all the schools, and she's so nice and so helpful.
Thank you, guys, all for your time and listening to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, just in...
Yeah, I think I do have, off of Vice President Lathan's point there, and I think we're getting tangential here, so it might be time for another discussion item on, yeah, parent engagement. But I think, especially with parent comments like that, that really enjoy the program, I think it does show some of the structural issues in terms of how we function as a school district in terms of supporting programs like this. Because if we know that programs like these are successful, then why is it that the school site is still the one that's funding it? So we're essentially, right, strapping a portion of their budget every single year, especially if they've been doing this year after year, after they've already discovered something that's successful? And then we also need to discuss things like, how do these school site councils communicate both between each other and within us, so that we can scale programs that we do find successful? So I think Vice President Lathan is touching on a good point here, that if we're seeing things that are successful, how do we support those, expand those? Because that's really what our role is right here in governance, is finding things that are effective and finding ways to make them happen more often. And I think that's where our district's strategy and communication comes in. And I think that became clear once this parent here advocated for that program.
Thank you. I do have another speaker card, Velma Wilson, for nine Y.
Good evening again. And, you know, parent involvement and engagement has always been a passion of mine. I am now serving as the Executive Vice President for 32nd District PTA, as the first African-American that's actually standing in next in line for president. That says a lot in the 53 history, 53-year history of the Parent Teacher Association serving this county. I'm proud of the work. It's not easy, it's very arduous. And when I see families, and when I can engage with so many, our unhoused students, our foster students, those that just feel hopeless, a lot of them are going through a lot of stuff, a lot. And there are times, and I've had these conversations with several of you as the board, and even the superintendent and staff, that there's times that I do feel undervalued. And there are times that it gets so rough that I was like, I say it, and I say it jokingly, y'all gonna miss me when I'm gone. Because I have been that parent, doing this work for free. I need that to sink in, doing this work for free. And yes, I get emotional, doing this work for free. This district is amazing to me. We've had some ups and downs, and we had the times where I didn't even feel belonging. But guess what? I'm still standing. And when I think and I look at these children that are standing, that came and spoke, and I listen to Ayesha, and I listen, I have a parent here. So many of them want to come, and they're intimidated. They don't know how to address this board. They don't know how to get through the rigor of public education. And that's the value that I can bring, and I have brought to this district for many of years, not just through my own children, but beyond. There's no stake in the game for me, because when I say I was doing this work for free. But I have a household and family and things that I have to, that I need. So we have to think about where our priorities are when it comes to family engagement and involvement, and what does that really look like? And I'm willing to be a part of that dialogue. Let's talk about it cohesively, because we are in this together. Our children's lives depend on it. Thank you to all of you that have given me this opportunity over the years to just be me and to be able to engage with some of the most volatile families. I appreciate that. And if this contract doesn't get approved tonight, it doesn't stop the work, because we need it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've seen Velma in action, and actually, I was impressed when she had the lunch, lunch gear where the kids would come together and she would meet and talk with them. She would bring in speakers, so the kids could under, could meet other people from other areas of knowledge. And so, and it also brought them new ideas. And so she's there. In fact, she's there all the time, morning and night, almost. So she's engaged with the parents. It just happens that that particular school is paying for her, and that's how they decided to do that. But that's their choice, and it's their money to deal with. But she's doing the parent engagement that's needed throughout the school, district. But we just haven't found a strong plan yet.
Yeah.
And that goes back to our superintendent as to how he, they want to, you know, how she wants to come up with the way to deal with it. I just want to give my tidbit, because I've been there.
Yeah.
And morning in the morning, giving out donuts and coffee.
Yeah.
Is one of the issues.
And so I would like to second that. And I think, you know, it'd be hard, we'd be hard-pressed to deny the impact that Velma has in the community. From the school bus, I'm sorry, the stuff-the-bus, to a number of other programs that I get in trouble if I'm not at, you know, Velma's, Velma's there. And I think that, you know, if I'm, if I'm understanding Trustee Hernandez and Trustee Lathan, Trustee Dr. Lathan as well, I think those people that she can impact, she's one person, those people that she can impact could be sort of systematized in a way that will positively impact more people if we were a little bit more intentional about what that could look like. And so I think, you know, I think it's a both and, if I'm understanding correctly, I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody, but that's what I, that's what I, that's what I'm hearing. It's an appreciation as well as, you know, an idea of, okay, well, we know this is working, how do we systematize this so that way we can possibly impact more people in the district?
I think that was part of it, but I can say, but also just having conversations around what our values are and what the expectations of, of a parent engagement person is. I've, I've been there, and I know sometimes people are annoyed, because I say, I've been a principal, but I have, and a successful one. And I know what parent engagement looks like. And we need to come to consensus about what behaviors are okay when parents are engaging with other parents. We need to be okay with all kinds of things and have that conversation, and we haven't had that yet. And so right now, it's this school is doing this, this school is doing that. And I understand the autonomy that, that schools have with budgeting in this district, that's fine. But what is, what is the vision for it? Because they're, we're not leading the vision, we're being led. And that's not okay. And that's my, that was my point.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent items A through Z.
Second?
I have a motion on, oh, so you can, yeah, yeah. So I have a motion on the floor to approve items A, consent items A through...
Z.
Z. And it's been properly seconded. It sounds like we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Vice President Lathan?
Not for everything, no.
The motion on the table is to approve the consent calendar.
I know what the motion is.
Yes or no?
I just said, no.
Yeah, she said no.
President Lewis?
Yes. The motion carries.
Okay.
All right, item number 10, consolidated application.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, we ask you to approve our consolidated application. So this application, it's a yearly application. It allows the district to access Title Funds, Title 1 through 4. These are funds that help us close the opportunity gap, giving students access to quality, high, our standards, supporting effective instruction, English learners, student and school supports. So they're very important federal funds, and we complete this application every year. We're asking for your approval of this application, so we can move forward with these federal funds.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Trustee Rocha?
No comment, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, yeah, I want to give folks a chance to... Trustee Dr. Lathan?
No.
Trustee Hernandez?
Nope.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Action items 10B. Antioch Unified School District Initial Proposal to Antioch Education Association for the 23, 24 school year, excuse me.
Yes, that would be me, Board President. So we're providing the district's initial proposal to our AEA colleagues. We will be entering into negotiations after we have approval of this particular proposal, outlining our overall process through Government Code 3547. We present initial proposal to them. They have already provided us initial proposals to us, and so we have already scheduled some days and times in September to meet in the negotiation process. We'll be meeting to discuss, again, at the table, potential for salary, for benefits, and then several items, as included here. We'll be discussing the peer assistance and review program and the induction program, that's Article 26. And we've also included Article 11, hours of employment. So those will be the initial proposal that the district brings forward. We're just seeking your innocence, understanding and approval of that, so we can continue in the process of public, of negotiations with AEA.
Okay. Questions from the board? Trustee Hack?
No questions.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
No.
Trustee Rocha?
None.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve item 10B.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve item 10B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Onto item 11, review, item 11A, review of board governance proposals.
So the board, you will recall at a governance retreat that we had, wished to move forward with the board governance model, and we put out an RFP to see what proposals we received, and those are before you this evening for your review and consideration.
Do we have discussion on any of the proposals put forth?
Yeah, I guess I can start off our discussion, because I think all four of these have very kind of different outcomes and different deliverables at the end of the day. And I think, given kind of our focus on our last discussion that we met as a board retreat was on really developing this governance model, I think the one that gets closest to that is the Council of Great City Schools proposal that we have here. And I think, especially in terms of, yeah, what we've talked about to accomplish, I think this touches on that the best in terms of what they've presented to us.
Trustee Hack?
I would think that, looking at the economics of it and the timelines of it, I would go the ESS being the first option for me.
And the goal of this, this conversation is for us to determine which one?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Trustee Rocha?
I normally would be going with CSBA, but their cost is quite high. So ESS, which is connected to our attorneys' knowledge and knowledgeable about the educational code in our area, I would go with the ESS for 17,000.
And I'm refreshing myself, because I was in a meeting with very similar conversations earlier today.
And I think my, my challenge with the ESS proposal is that the main deliverable is a governance handbook, is a board handbook, which really, as far as you, when you look at governance models and the tools that we have in governance, it's the document with the least teeth of anything. And so we'd be working on a book that basically says, how do we do the things that we've already been doing, which isn't really what we actually want to come out with. We've been talking about governance models. And so I just think that this proposal really misses the mark when it comes to what our discussion's been and our desired deliverables when we've been talking about in our previous board retreat meetings.
Dr. Trustee Lathan, uh, Trustee Dr. Lathan?
I'm interested, one, I appreciate what Trustee Hernandez just said about, about the actual, what we went in this for. So we went in this, the conversation was around student-focused governance model, because we don't have one right now. And that allows us to do monitoring, it just really shifts us in a way that we can become high-performing, a high-performing district for all of our students. And so when I look at what our conversation was, it's the Council of Great City Schools that meets those requirements, and it also includes other things that we did not ask for. I think one of the challenges to Trustee Rocha's point is that some of this is really expensive. And so my question then is for Ms. Robbins around the budget and how it will affect the budget in terms of any of the contracts that we, or consultants that we work with.
So, so as a matter of, when the budget was adopted, this, this particular item wasn't included with any dollar amount. And reviewing what, what has been in the Board of Education budget that we have set for the 23, 20, for school year, there is a line item of, let's see, 18,000, and, no, excuse me, 14,000. And of that, it's for, if it's, it's for consulting services. And of that, most of it's, or part of it's used on the gamut online, and there's about 9,000 that is not encumbered or has not been identified in the expenditures. So, you know, straight across the board, 9,000 is available. That's not to say that we wouldn't be able to find money and do a budget transfer. This is a good example of how we operate often, right? When expenditures come up, and then we would reduce maybe some supplies and put it in services. In addition to, we're finishing closing the books, and I would, I would guess, I haven't seen the, the outcome of what that looks like, but I would guess there's money in the ending fund balance that could offset this budget adjustment.
Okay, so I think the most apropos way to have this conversation is to, let's go through each of the proposals and offer, you know, not roses and thorns, I'm not in class, you know, positives and potential challenges to each, considering the funding limitations that we just heard.
I'm wondering, since I've only heard two, really, that the board is, sounds like they're leaning towards, unless you feel differently, Dr. Lewis, maybe we just talk about those two, perhaps? That's what the board would like, just for efficiency purposes. There's also the option, too, if the board doesn't come to consensus tonight, we could invite two of the proposals to come present also.
I would think, if we're having the two options, there are huge differences in economics on the two. So I would like, what you suggested, to have somebody from both those entities come and share exactly what they can do and provide for us, so we have another frame of reference other than just economics.
Do we have anybody that opposes having the organizations present either virtually or here, or, you know, however that works out? And so that way, we can get more in-depth understanding of what their positions are.
Well, as I just said, I'm in favor, so...
None, of course.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm not opposed to that idea. I think the other thought that's going through my mind as I'm choosing and deciding, you know, which ones I think we should go to, is also, you know, and something I think, I think should be going through all our minds through this time, is being strategic about our upcoming bond issues and making sure that we're being really specific on what we're doing to prepare ourselves to be really good about that. And one of the things that is much stronger, I think, in the other proposal, is that, you know, a number of the deliverables is diving into our data and really starting to prepare us to become a more data-driven school district, which I think is going to be important in terms of upcoming bonds, when it comes to showing, you know, what we're doing with our money and what outcomes are we getting with that? Because it's not just what we're doing with our money, it's what we're getting out of it. And that's usually where the, the sticking point is when it comes to bond issues in the future. And I think another thing as well, to be mindful of with these, if we're talking economics, that these are different length contracts, where CG, the Council of Great City Schools is the longest contract. So while it is expensive, it is also for the longest amount of time, whereas the ESS contract is just for a few months. So when you look at, in terms of how much time we're getting and the deliverables and the amount of support, we also got to take that into mind. And again, I emphasize, they're not the same deliverables in there. So comparing the dollar amounts is really comparing apples and oranges, and a misunderstanding about how to do those pieces.
And I agree with what you're saying, but that, maybe that's the solution, though, is to have them come present or something.
Like, and I'm not opposed to that, but that's, I think, the, the time that we have is my one consideration with that.
My concern is that it is not a local, it's working, I mean, not knowing California laws, maybe they have to find out. I mean, it's not a local person that normally has our educational laws in knowledge, plus it's the distance. And so we're now talking about transportation as well. It's included, that's either aside from the reg... It's included, that's either aside from the regular fee. So I was looking for something that was more closer to us. And then I was looking at the income. And like I said, I normally would have gone with CSBA because that's the organization we deal with.
Trustee Lathan?
I like the idea, Trustee Hack, to have them come and present either virtually or in person. The work that I'm thinking about and why, one reason why I wanted to become a board member is because it's thinking about transformational change. So some of these organizations are pretty agnostic, and it's like, yes, we'll create a board calendar for you. We can do that on our own. We're all educated folks up here. So if we want transformation and work that goes along with the National Center for Urban School Transformation that's doing our equity audits, I think we need to be mindful of that, right? Because otherwise, we have these audits, but then we don't have the tools or resources or the governance model to actually follow through with what the audit says. And so that's something I just want us to be mindful of as we move forward. The Council of Great City Schools created the student-focused governance model. So why don't you go with the, you know, like, just thinking about that, right? We can go with another organization that doesn't know about it, or we can go with one that actually developed it and can help us fine-tune it the way that works for our students and our community. So I understand the budget issue, and I also understand that money can be, you know, moved in a way that we need to be a high-performing district for all of our kids. And that's where I'm going. Otherwise, why spend a smaller amount of money on something we actually don't need or we can do ourselves? What will help us actually transform for our students?
Okay.
I agree with that. Until we have the presentation, I can't make that decision.
So it sounds, it sounds like, I don't know if we need to make a motion or if it's consensus-based?
Consensus.
It sounds like we have consensus to have the organizations come in and present, so that way we can make the most informed decision.
And I will work to, I will encourage, try to make sure that at the next board meeting, because I think I hear you as far as the clock ticking and you want to get started with this work.
Yeah.
Is that all of them or just a couple?
Just the two that were identified.
Okay. ESS and Council of Great City Schools.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other conversation about this topic? Blue Phil?
ESS and CE, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, fair enough.
Next up is revised board policy 5126, awards for achievement.
As you'll recall, the board came to consensus for Trustee Rocha and Trustee Hernandez to come up with a policy. I believe they agreed on a number of things, and then both had, want the board's input on other wording. So those are before you for discussion this evening.
Yeah, and I can kick off our discussion on this. Yeah, so really, I think the general differences within the two is just like, I'm more inclined to create policy that has a little bit more teeth and will keep us a little bit more consistent with things. And so really, the big difference is, and the policies I put forward, I put in a piece there where we regularly review what students are receiving awards and kind of compare different demographics and things, just to kind of keep track of things like that, see if there's any kind of discrepancy, something I think we should be doing with a lot of our policies. But I think also what Trustee Rocha has on here, I think it's perfectly fine and great, and I'm happy to support that as well. I think I just wanted to make sure that we touch base on this, but I think either one is a good solution to move forward and good, like, improvements. The policies really just have us be a little bit more specific and a little bit more direct when it comes to thinking about how we recognize our students. I think it's a good step forward either way.
Is it possible to combine? I mean, I understand the approach to, and design are different, but is it possible to design the intention of both?
I think, I would say that Trustee Rocha's current version is kind of like the combined approach at the end of the day, and mine just has that extra piece with the regular 12th month reporting. So it's whether we want that piece or not. It's kind of the main difference, as well as maybe a little bit, I would say a little bit stronger language in terms of equity-minded language in mine, but I don't think it's that significant of a difference necessarily.
Okay. Discussion? Trustee Hack?
Okay, because the two of you come with a combination of whatever, and have one option for us down the road?
I'd say, unless anyone feels strongly, as I do, about putting in the 12th month report, I'd say otherwise, we move forward with, I think what Trustee Rocha has on here makes the most sense, unless, you know, a majority of us feel strongly about this 12th month.
I think the reporting, especially around the conversations that we've been having around identifying what our strengths and areas of growth are, I think reporting annually is, I don't know that it's going to be that much, that big of a deal in terms to add, in terms of what our workload is, but I think it would be very helpful in terms of understanding where we are and, you know, potential growth opportunities. So, but I'm hopping in early. My apologies, I typically don't do that.
You know, I just wanted a simple one.
Yeah.
I didn't want to add anything bigger. And then all students have equal access to awards and recognition to ensure recipients represent the diversity of students attending Antioch Unified School District. It's simple.
Mm-hmm.
And then I was concerned about having the superintendent having to go back and annually figure out who and what, because actually the awards are given to students, and we never know when that award is. And it is not the local award, it's something that's outside of the school district award, so that they're recognized in a different way.
Got it. So, Trustee Hernandez, can you help us, help us, the royal, sorry, the royal us, understand kind of what that evaluation would look like or what you envision?
Yeah, so this policy in particular, right, outlines three specific award types, the ones that we give out as a board, the Golden State Seal of Merit Diploma and the Bileiteracy Award. So those would be the three data points that would be collected, of which I think we do collect those three, we just don't stratify that data at this point, is really the bigger difference here. And then it also, you know, has as policy, something that we will do continuously versus something that is an informal norm that we do, I mean, we do on an annual basis, talk about the number of people that have gotten the Bileiteracy Award and the number of people that have gotten the Golden State Seal of Merit Diploma, but we haven't really taken, we don't really take a moment to look at, you know, what students are that and what's going on with those students and be able to dive deeper in that. So that's really the difference. It's not all the, you know, awards that each individual school site gives out.
So President Lewis, what we would need tonight, and it sounds like Trustee Hernandez is amenable to bringing back Trustee Rocha's policy, is just consensus for the board to bring it back for a first reading. So this won't be the end of the discussion, and then we'll come back for a second reading and approval.
Is anybody opposed to that?
Can you please clarify what you mean?
In terms of, so what I heard Trustee Hernandez saying was that he's good with Trustee Rocha's version and moving forward with that. So if the board agrees with that, we can put it on a future agenda, probably the next agenda for a first reading, and the board can have more discussion if they'd like, and then it comes back for a second reading and approval.
Is anybody opposed to that?
I actually like the metrics, and I think, and I know high-performing districts have metrics. And so I think metrics, data, root cause analysis, all that is important even in our policies. So I would advocate to either merge, find a way to merge them, or go with the other one.
Yeah, so that's the conversation, to merge them and bring them back?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's different from what the superintendent said. The superintendent's to bring down Trustee Rocha's piece, which, like I said, I'm fine with. But if we do have three of us up here that like the reporting piece on there, then I'd like, I prefer that over.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find a way to move us forward on policy overall.
Right.
So, and it sounds like you were in support of that?
And so, yes, yes, and.
So if you're reporting on the students and how many, are we doing it by ethnic? Is that what we're doing, demographics?
Well, and that's, that was going to be my next question, so currently.
Because if we do, then does that mean that we can only give so many to this group and not so many to that?
No, 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 no. It's not necessarily calling the population that we give awards to, if I'm understanding correctly. It's more, okay, this is the number of students that got it, now we're going to have some information available for us to see. Is that kind of?
Yeah, yeah, just to see, yeah, what's going on, because we should be wary of, like, any discrepancies that exist in things like our Golden State Seal of Merit Diploma and our Bileiteracy Award. Are we making sure that all of our students are getting access to the ability to get these, those awards in particular? And then, and yeah, this'd be a great way to check on it. It doesn't force us to give awards in any certain way, but it is just another metric so we can talk about student outcomes. Because I think that's the direction I envision our board moving forward, is talking about outcomes, student outcomes, what are we actually getting when it comes to the achievements of students and the things that they're doing in the school district? And are they all getting those opportunities and all getting all those chances to succeed? And so this is just one way of being a check on that, to make sure that we take a moment to continue that.
And so Superintendent Anello, how was that, well, let me back up. Are we collecting information on awards and merits for students currently?
Yes, for those awards.
Yeah. And so there's a centralized way to do it currently?
Yes.
Okay. And so what I'm hearing is, there's a desire to just have a report at the end of the year?
Yes. Maybe even at the Friday board letter, for an annual report.
Yeah. So if the two of you wouldn't mind, and it's, so the rest of the board, we can bring it back with that addition, with your, well, not your, but with the three awards and that additional piece, and then we can move forward for next meeting.
But is Mary comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Well, as long as we're, I mean, all we're doing is saying that we're looking at our own awards. We can't control on the outside awards.
Well, and so it's not us controlling who gets the award, it's?
No, but understanding who gets it on the outside.
Right.
We know this part because that's inside.
Mm-hmm.
But other, like, the last time it was the county supervisors that gave that award.
Of course.
And that's how it all started, was that particular thing about how other organizations give awards to our students and that maybe they should be recognized.
So I'm happy to take a version and then add the metrics with it, because I don't, I'm not hearing that the rest of the language is, there's consensus that either one of the rest of the language is fine, but that you want the metrics in there. And I'm happy to draft something up, again, bring it as a first read, that includes those three, if that's the consensus of the board.
Yeah. Is there any contention with?
There's not a contention, I'm just needing clarification. It's already written, and so what are you going to do this?
Well, I think that there's no, there's, the other language is not that far off. So having some of the language but adding the metrics.
Just creating a single document so that way we can?
So taking some of Trustee Rocha's language?
Yeah.
That is not in opposition to Trustee Hernandez?
If you were to do that, then would share the two people and see if they're comfortable with that, then bring that back?
Correct. Yes.
We, this is short enough that we could actually take the moment to just kind of go through this as a board right now, I think. Because if you open up Trustee Rocha's version, what I have written is in blue, which he has written is in red. So as long as we get, and then, so the beginning, we just choose between those two. Then I have the blue piece in the middle, and then we have the last section, which is again, that red piece versus the blue piece. And so if we just choose between those pieces, of which I think the first set, either I think is fine with me. The middle one is, I think, important to have in there. And then the last one is just choosing between whether we want the language that Trustee Rocha put in there or the language with the report, which I think we've kind of come to consensus that we want the report language in there.
But I would think a better option would be, I understand exactly what you're saying, and Mary agrees to it, but I'd like to see the document.
Let's, yeah, so let's.
So can we, can we agree on that, on those pieces of language coming back to us then?
Yes.
If Mary's okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's let it come back, and then we can see.
So then, yeah, so then my suggestion would be Mary's red language for that first line, then the bulleted list language in blue in the middle, and then at the bottom would be my language again in blue at the bottom. Is that clear to everyone?
To come back with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that clear to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that'll come back. Okay, cool.
And so that way we're on the same page. Yeah, and I, yeah. So not to dismiss your suggestion, but we also want to make sure that we are concise.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
Good enough.
Thank you, I want to say thank you team. Okay, thank you, board, for that conversation. So next up is Trustee Hernandez, policy for elected officials and other guests on district campuses.
Yeah, so I can kind of start our discussion on this as well. I just think we should have a discussion as a board about our implementation of these kinds of policies, what's our intention with these kinds of policies, and our adherence to these kinds of policies. We've had incidents where, you know, elected officials haven't been able to come onto our campus, or I want to make sure that we have a process that's clear to allow that, because I think something that we value, that this community values, is making sure that our students have access to elected officials, to their representatives, and are able to have a voice in their education. So I think if there's ever any kind of friction or barriers that prevent elected officials from coming onto our campus, it prevents our students from having the voice to kind of share with that. So I think there should be kind of like a clear pathway and a clear process that doesn't encumber people from being able to come on here. Because I think it sends the wrong message to our students when they're not able to interact with our elected officials. And I think it's important that we also continue to foster good relationships with our other state and federal elected officials, because so much of our funding comes from there. You know, we know one of the congressmen that serves the school district is on the Federal Education Committee. So we want to make sure that we're being very well when navigating those kinds of relationships and that we're providing ultimately the best outcomes for our students and the best opportunities for our students. Because oftentimes, so many people feel like Antioch is this place that you want to get away from, this place that doesn't matter. Students often feel that they don't matter, and being exposed to, you know, people that are traditionally viewed as important helps students also feel like they're important, that their voice matters and that they have a say in their education. So I think, you know, some of the things I'd like to do is revise some of our policies and also create a clear policy that defines the pathway for elected officials to be able to come and visit our schools and campuses, and other guests to come and visit our schools and campuses in a way that's transparent to the community.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Chair? I already made you mayor.
No, no, no.
Mr. Chair, could we still have, could we have the superintendent explain to us what our policy is now? In other words, what's the process? The elected official, and we've always had our congressman here, it's never been denied before, but they have always made that require, asking us to come onboard, or we, the teachers or the principal or whatever, has asked them to come. So that's been the knowledge that I know. It has not been any different, has it?
Well, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing policy, and then I'm hearing administrative, an administrative function, which would be of district staff. In the, there is currently, we do not have a policy, and so my recommendation, if this is what you want to move forward to, is that you establish another ad hoc to come up with that policy. And I'm happy to run it through our legal counsel, just to make sure it meets, it's buttoned up and ready to go. And then typically what happens is administrative regulations may be attached to that policy. Those are written by staff, because those are administrative functions that would outline more of the exact what you need to, what needs to be done.
So what you need to do is get people who are involved in that process at the sites, their input, also run through legal counsel to make sure the language is da-da-da, or whatever, and then see where it goes.
Trustee Lathan?
So I think it's important, as Trustee Hack said, to get the input of folks on the ground. And ultimately, it is the board's responsibility to write the policy, period. That is our job. So we can't give it to someone else to do it, we have to do it. If you take the lead, Trustee Hernandez, if that's what you want, I don't mind partnering with you, there might be other folks who partner as well. But I do think it's highly important that we write our policies.
I would recommend Trustee Hack join that committee as well, simply because of his working knowledge of the district and working in the district for so long, like, yeah, because I did a little bit of digging, you know, because I've had a couple of conversations with Trustee Hernandez around ed law. There's not a real clear ed law that really sort of fits this. It's some around, you know, parental involvement. One of them that I found was Ed Code Division 4, Part 28, Chapter 1.5, Article 1, Section 51, 1119, Sections 1 through 3. I know that was a lot. But effectively, what it talked about was parents coming on campus, or if parents, or I'm sorry, those folks coming on campus to ensure that they don't disrupt the education of students. So it's not necessarily the same thing, but that's the closest that I think we had. So I think something would be beneficial if we had that.
Part of that process should include legal counsel and see from their, what they're coming from.
And so we do have a speaker card. Michael Sajhorn?
Yeah. So I teach government and social studies and have a long experience, not just in this district, but in a charter school, of inviting people who are representatives, the governor of California, Jerry Brown spoke to my class. And I can tell you that my students at Deer Valley, um, they have no mercy to, um, uh, representatives, uh, from any, any branch of government. They're a tough crowd, you know, and they ask questions of these people that are not rude and disrespectful, but they ask very blunt, blunt questions that spur discussion within my classroom. And that is how we teach, uh, government, much better than simply read the textbook and answer the questions in the back, all right? It's that engagement with public officials, and, and there can be many people. Mayor Freitas had come to my class before. Um, he is, um, in both in his capacity, he is working for the water district and also is mayor. Um, and I've invited other people, uh, to come and talk, because their perspective, there's a, there's a mutual assistance between the members of either Congress or members of the assembly, um, to, to actually speak to students. There, there's, students get it tremendous, they see them as people. You know, I worked in the legislature as an intern for a year in Sacramento, and I thought all politicians were crooked and ruthless people, and then after working in Sacramento, I recognized that these were people, and they had good intentions. And so I, I would caution you to avoid any kind of restrictive policy that prevents teachers, particularly at the secondary level, of bringing in people who have a different perspective. Now, every year, I get, I get vegan people wanting to come in and talk about vegetarianism, and I realize, one, I like hamburgers more than they do, and I don't let, allow them in, because they have a, they have a political message that they're trying to, you know, something I learned from Stephanie, they want to come in and just take over the instruction, and I'm not allowing them to do that. So make it, you know, reasonably flexible, don't put cuffs on the hands of good teachers who want to expand the classroom, uh, with real working people in government. Um, and that I just give you as a longtime social studies teacher that, um, let it go. Let, let us use our best judgment, and I think that's my, uh, my 10 cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that statement is in line, uh, but again, the committee will meet.
Worth more than 10 cents.
It's worth more than 10 cents.
Very good.
You know, because again, if, if a person wants to come in and it's, yeah, so, without going into too much detail or sort of guiding the conversation, uh, this committee can meet. It sounds like the will of the board is to have that committee formed and to meet.
Well, I think that vice president Lathan also expressed wanting to put together this policy.
Yeah.
Well, we can't do a committee of, of three.
You can't do three.
Because that would be a quorum. It'd have to be a.
You're right.
I think the two of you, Mary and you.
That's fine.
Cool.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to work on this with vice president Lathan.
Yeah.
Cool. Any, yeah, any, any additional conversation on this item? All right, thank you. Uh, number 12, resolutions for first reading, there are none. 13, resolutions for immediate action, there are three, and we have to read these individually, correct?
Um, sorry. You can take them all together if you'd like.
Are there any, are there any that need to be, uh, that the board would like to pull?
If you're gonna say, nope, I'd like to take them together.
See, I'm just wanting clarity on 13C, what, what, I, I just have a question, what does this mean?
So this is, um, what his presentation was earlier this evening, and so do you have a specific question? Nope, okay.
Yeah, because I was reading the notes.
Got it.
Without being here, so no worries, no worries.
Okay, uh, so I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of, uh, 13A, B, and, uh, C.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve, uh, resolutions A through C. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion on the floor properly seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, uh, so next is section 14, resolutions for reading and second, I can't read tonight, resolutions for second reading and action.
Yeah, so this came before the, these came before the board. These are, um, one half of our annual resolutions and recognitions, so, um, you can take them all together, and I would ask that the board approve them.
Okay. Are there any that the board would like to pull? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion and approve A through T.
All right, I have a motion on the floor to, um, uh, approve items 14A through T. Do I have a second?
Second, sorry.
Okay, motion on the floor, and it's been properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Number 15, board policies for first reading, there are none. 16, board policy for second reading and action. Are there any that need to be pulled from this section?
Yes, uh, six, 16C.
C, okay.
So I appreciate, uh, superintendent's, uh, mellow attempt to, um, mediate, or mediate, or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, because we haven't followed through as a board on what we said we were gonna do, and so she increased the, um, the proposal was to increase the funding for board professional learning to 5,000, um, to 5,000 from $3,000 a year. And while I appreciate that, um, it feels like, uh, it's a go-around, instead of us actually doing what we committed to do, which was to look at the board policy that I drafted, to go through it, vote on which part you want, and then share it back with, um, the administrative assistants. And so my recommendation is to pull this, and so we can either do what we said we're gonna do, or decide that's not what we want to do anymore, because we're not doing it.
Okay, so let's go the other way. Can we, uh, make a motion A and B?
Yeah, so let's, uh, I have, are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion, I have, I have a motion on the floor to approve items 16A and B. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
No, we're looking at.
Item 16C, um, and trust, yeah.
Uh, my concern is that I know many of you want to come to some upcoming trainings very soon. I'm just worried about delaying this. It can always be revised, but I don't want you to miss out on the opportunities that you have planned by not having a large enough budget, but of course, that's up to the board.
I think we should, so it takes five minutes for us to do that document.
And so what's?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Kelly?
Does that not go in with our planning for our government, I mean, with the future planning?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
In other words, our governor's training, this is gonna come up. Doesn't this, so, take care of that?
The funding?
Oh, no, not the funding. We're talking about, I think you wanted us to fill out this form, right? So the issue is that we haven't filled out the form, but should it be not going into the governance?
Oh, okay.
Training.
I follow.
So do we really need to fill the form? See what I mean?
Before the training.
I'm not sure what that has to do with it.
May I speak for a moment?
Yes.
Just to give some, some background, so we did send out the survey, uh, initially, one trustee responded, eventually, a second trustee responded. In between the first trustee and the second trustee responding, a third trustee requested that this be held as a board governance item, because the trustee stated that, and I'm trying not to mention names, so. The, the third trustee asked that this be held as a board governance, part of the board cover this training, because the trustee felt like it fit there better. The trustee did make that request. My understanding is the trustee made that request to Dr. Lewis and, or President Lewis, and that President Lewis stated that that would be fine, it did seem to fit there, uh, and so that's where we are. The, if you read the staff report, it states that the, that this is like a temporary increase with the intention that this will come back as part of board governance.
So just to be clear, we all voted to do something, and then someone called the, the president, and something changed. Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. So we are still going to do that, uh, so the, the plan is to have it, uh, worked out in the board governance meeting, because we, we have time to dedicate to that conversation. This is an attempt to, like, let's say, for example, between now and, let's say, if we have our board governance meeting in December, between now and December, we have 5,000 as opposed to $3,000.
Trying to understand that, but what we all voted on was to do what she said, and so I'm trying to understand where the breakdown is and how something was changed without bringing it back to the board to make that decision.
At this time, we don't have three survey forms that have come in. There have been two, so there is no consensus from the survey forms. There are only two that have been returned, so that's where we are.
I get that. I guess what I'm saying is, if we don't want to do that, just say it. Don't be passive aggressive. If you don't want to do what we agreed to do, just say, we don't want to do that, so then we can find another way to do it.
No, 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 I think we, the plan is to do it, but in the, the governance training. It's, we're not saying that we're, we're not gonna do it, we voted on it, we're gonna do it. It's just in the governance training.
Is there a reason why we have to do it in the governance training? I don't really understand the intention. We can discuss that as like an agenda. I mean, I guess I'm, I'm suggesting, can we approve this and then also bring that discussion to our next meeting, uh, so that we can then, like, just quickly revise our, uh, policy again, and have the full-length discussion on this, uh, thing. Rather than way back on emails, I think we could just do it in person next, next meeting.
Is there anybody that's opposed to that? Trustee Rocha, you look confused. What's your question?
Well, because it just seems to me that if we're gonna go through a governance training, this comes up along with it. You know, as we make decisions or how we answer the questions, goes in the governance training.
All of the board policies will. So what I'm saying is, we chose one, but why not all of them? Like, and, and it wasn't a discussion, so it's fine that you have your ideas about it, but it wasn't a discussion. The discussion was, we would do, we made a motion, we would do what was recommended, and we didn't do that, and so that's my whole point. What I would not do is, we have, we came up with something we want to do, and I would not call the president and say, can we do it differently now, and then not even bring it up. Like, that's not okay. So that's why I'm bringing it up. That's not what we agreed to. If we're gonna do something differently, then we need to say something differently.
Ms. Covler, do you recall, was that a vote by the board, or?
I don't recall it. I, it, I believe it was consensus. I don't believe it was a vote by the board. I believe it was consensus when we were doing the governance training.
And was it to just revise the policy, date, time to be determined, venue to be determined?
Well, there were, the original, um, the way it originally played out, and I don't have my notes in front of me, so my apologies if I'm slightly off on it, uh, but the board, it did select trustee Rocha and trustee Hack to come up with a revision to this policy. That was voted on by the board. When they presented their, their, um, before they even presented their board, tr, uh, Dr. Lathan, trustee, or vice president Lathan, provided her version as well, um, which was entirely different. That came before the board as an item for discussion. There was consensus by, I believe it was consensus by the board for you to put out a, um, survey where we broke down each portion that did not match the, the revisions suggested by trustee Rocha and trustee Hack, uh, as well as, it, the, we grouped out each section from Dr. Lathan's proposal as well, sent that survey to trustees, and said, are you in favor of this? Yes or no? Are you in favor of this? Yes or no? We did receive the two back, but again, I believe that was consensus to go down that path, um, and as of right now, we have two forms returned, so.
So would it be beneficial to, to resend that survey form to the trustees who haven't completed it?
So I think just, you know, I think the cleanest thing to accomplish what we're, our intention is, is update this policy today, and then we can discuss all of this, um, in, with, uh, the, the, the different changes and policy that vice president Lathan put together at our next meeting. Uh, that way we don't, because it's a very simple form, it's very simple changes, similar to what we did when we went through the policy previously, uh, so we can kind of do a similar process like that, where we discuss all the parts and pieces, uh, during the next meeting. I think that's the cleanest way to ensure that, um, we're, you know, talking about the things that we need to talk about. Because I think, I, I think if we email again, we're just gonna, so it's been our circles again.
Keep going on and on.
Okay, so is there any, uh, conversation around trustee Hernandez's, uh, suggestion for us to approve 16C now, with the intention of bringing this back in the next board meeting, uh, to discuss, uh, the policy that was put forth?
Sounds very logical to me.
Cool, then I'll go ahead and make the motion, uh, to approve 16C with the intention that we will discuss, uh, revisions to this policy at our September 13th meeting.
Okay, so I, I have a motion on the floor, uh, to approve 16C with the stipulation that we will discuss, uh, the policy at the September 13th, is 13th, is 13th board meeting?
Next meeting.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Uh, item 17, universal pre-kindergarten planning and implementation grant.
All right, the universal pre-kindergarten, uh, planning and implementation, implementation grant, uh, is been a work in progress across, uh, several different departments at the district level, who are working to plan and implement, uh, the availability of universal pre-kindergarten to students who are four years old. By 2025, all students who have their fourth birthday, uh, that are four by September 1st will have access to this. With this expansion of the legislation, it's great for our students to have this early education, but there's quite a bit of planning that has had to go on to ensure that our facilities are prepared, uh, our teachers are prepared, that we have enough staffing. So, um, with the work of director Jason Larson of Elementary Schools, Amy Betancourt, Ken, um, Ken Turnage in our maintenance department, our lead TK teachers, really working collaboratively. Uh, we have 15, um, all of our 15 elementary school sites are up and running and serving, uh, TK right now, uh, with the vision to expand by 2025 to have this access available to all four-year-olds. There, it, you'll find in the plan, there is quite a bit of information for you about professional development for the teacher, uh, the services that our students are gonna receive, so they're comprehensive and supportive for this, uh, age level. Uh, we are, uh, very proud of the work that we've accomplished in such a short time, and that we have been ready to serve and have been able to serve all of our families, and that should the need arise, as we expand every year, the age levels, as we roll out all the way to four years old, that, uh, we feel very prepared to be able to serve all of our students and families.
And this is just here for information this evening.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a, a few. Uh, do we have information on what that TK population looks like, and whether it's maybe, you know, like, bigger or asymmetric from like our other trends of students in our district? Like, are we gonna potentially get a bigger influx than we think, or a smaller size, uh, group of, uh, these TK, uh, pre-K students than, uh, we maybe would expect given the current demographics?
Yeah, we could provide that information at a, you know, in a board letter for future, to bring back those metrics for you, uh, but right now, we're meeting the need, and we're still advertising and recruiting and, and letting our parents know that this is available to them. So we do anticipate growth, and there, and you'll find in the plan that should more families enroll, we do have a, a plan to add the PM session, uh, we have a, a plan to be able to expand to meet the need, because we do, we do believe that it will grow.
And our current enrollment in TK is 340 to 350 students.
And to add to that, sorry, the, um, we are working to do a demographic study. We have not done one here in a couple of years, and that can tell how the ages.
Yeah, and I know that the plan talks a little bit about, um, you know, planning for potential, like, new sites or new expansion, uh, in thinking of, you know, what if our, our need is greater? How, uh, you know, far is that conversation? Like, are we, uh, just thinking about both new sites and new expansion, or is it just kind of, um, kind of like pending, you know, more information, more data at this point?
Right now, all of our sites are, are up and running, so I think it's a matter of being able to accommodate additional classrooms, should that need arise. But right now, uh, we feel like we're looking good with the ability to add the PM session, because it is a half-day, so that gives us a lot of flexibility to be able to add, uh, based on the need from families.
And then, uh, this is kind of a little bit outside, outside of the plan here, but something I think I'm curious about as we're thinking about, you know, students that enroll earlier in our school district. Uh, it'd be interesting to know whether students that enroll earlier, whether we retain them longer than students that may be enrolled later, or especially compared to like kindergarten students, like, does earlier enrollment change, uh, who stays within our district longer in terms of thinking of, you know, long-term like ADA and enrollment and growth and trying to maintain those pieces?
And so can I, can I ask a follow-up question to that? Because I, I think it's an interesting point, so are you thinking about matriculation to our district, or are you thinking about sort of dropout, dropout and things like that? Like, so for example, if a person comes in TK, by fifth grade, actually, third grade is around the time where you see that sort of demographic shift of dropout and, and sort of that separation between students. Are you thinking about that?
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, like, whether. Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, like whether, yeah, coming in at TK, does that entice, for whatever reason, parents to want to stay in the district longer than someone that came in at kindergarten or at other stages potentially? Because I think it'd be interesting to think about that piece.
Well, I think it's interesting to look at the achievement outcomes of students who are here from TK through 12th grade versus students who are just here from kindergarten through 12th grade, TK through sixth grade versus kindergarten through sixth grade. Now that we have more of that data, it will be interesting to, to look at it, compare it, and we're happy to share that with, in a Friday board. So I think those are very important questions.
I have a question on that. Is, is our universal going for everybody? I mean, everybody needs to come in as a four-year-old?
We are trying to encourage families to enroll in the, in the TK program early on because we know that the research shows us that if students engage earlier
No, I know that.
in their education, that achievement will be higher. There's so, so many great metrics, and I think we can certainly, you know, look at all those metrics that you're discussing and be able to collect that data for the board.
The reason I ask that, excuse me, is because Head Start takes those children, the four-year-olds, but they provide the after-school childcare. Now, are we going to provide childcare afterwards?
Yeah. So one of the things, we, we are, Head Start is a partner at a couple of our school sites. And then we are, we do pair this. Our ELOC grant funding allows our children in TK to participate all the way to 6:00 PM. So when they get out at 11:30, there is that availability of our extended day program. So there's a full nine hours of, you know, it's a very long time for a four-year-old, but for, and, and most of our students don't participate that long. But to get some additional enrichment after the 11:30 school day is available to our families.
It's not a requirement, though.
The plus that I see...
Not a requirement. Parents opt into that.
The plus I see with it is that we now are going to be taking care of the middle income. At present time, with Head Start, we're taking care of the least amount of income. And then, of course, the people that have the income are sending them to private school. So now we're going to be, and I think that's the direction of the state, is to try to bring in the middle income. So it gives them a chance to go forward in their education.
Other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. All right. Item 19, additional comments which exceeded the first 30-minute session limit. There are none. Reports, comments from board members. We can start with trustee Hack.
Nothing. I mean, it's been great to see kids back in school and different programs and back to school nights and that kind of stuff. But yeah, so just out and about.
Out and about. Okay. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I'll just be short. I'll just share about my book for today because I think I'd like, you know, welcoming everyone back to a great new school year. I, today I want to share a book called In My Heart by Joe Wetek. And it's a book about feelings and talking about feelings because I think when it comes to social emotional learning, you know, one of the, the pieces that I think is so fundamental that we can often be overlooked is just the language of, you know, talking about your feelings. You know, kids have to learn what the word angry means, what it means to be sad, what it means to be happy. And sometimes kids don't actually have those words and can't express. And that's really the first step in, you know, social emotional learning and really being able to, you know, talk about the world that's kind of around you. Because, you know, I believe that when it comes to education, really the main purpose of education is to be able to change and navigate the world that's around you. And that includes being able to navigate your emotions, to process them, so that we can live in a successful world. And, you know, the first piece of that often is knowledge, and then the rest of it is, you know, how do we use that? How do we communicate that? So I think it's a, it's a real good book. And just a reminder as students are, you know, settling back into classes and things, that often times, behavior and anger and emotions can stem from just, you know, how do we even start talking about this for a lot of our younger students in particular? So I think it's a good read. That gives students a good foundation for thinking about all these different kinds of feelings that could, they, they could be having.
Thanks. Trustee Rocha?
I just wanted to comment that the Antioch Women's Club across the street here has been picking up our schools to support them in one way or another. They did it last year, and they did it again this year, and that was a small gift to each teacher. And the schools they selected was the Fremont Marsh Mission and Turner.
Yeah.
Nice.
So yes, we do want to welcome back teachers, faculty, staff, administrators, parents, students, and everyone else back to campus, you know, to start our 23-24 academic year. I think that that's a sentiment we all can share. So this, so far this year, there's been a lot. So the end of last year, there was a Lions Club winner for, for the oratory contests that came from Deer, Deer Valley High School. I don't have his name in front of me, but I can get that information. So it's a, it's a big deal. It's, he competed nationally, and he did really well. Actually, actually, Dr. Lathan and I sat on one of the early rounds of that competition. And so he was able to do some really great things. So next up, we have a pickleball tournament, and this is by Terrell Muhammad. If folks are interested, I can get the information to Superintendent Anello, and she can share that out. It's for youth eight to 18, I believe. And so that is another attempt for the community to come together. And apparently, pickleball is a thing. It's a big thing. I only recently heard of it, so I don't know if it's big to other people. But there's that. Next up is, so for my fraternity, Alpha Phi fraternity Incorporated, we, I am on, I am the chair for the education activities. And so we will be hosting a series of activities for students throughout the year. The first one coming up, I think it's on September 30th. And what that looks like is a financial aid workshop for parents. It's free of charge. We will have virtual and in-person options. It will be held at the East, I always get the name of this thing wrong, East Oakland Youth Development Center, EY, EYDC in Oakland. So I, I appreciate that that's far, but we will have a virtual option. So in that session, folks will learn how to navigate financial aid, how to get involved in, in preparing for school. Future items include, you know, how to make a plan for the upcoming year, you know, how to be successful in school, how to navigate challenges, personal branding, among others. So I, I'll be announcing those as they come up. And so I shared with the board, I was out last week because my mom passed away. So...
Sorry. It's all right. It's all right.
I'm okay. Thank you.
All right. So our future meeting, any, our future meetings will be on September 13th and the 27th. And I think it'd be great to adjourn today's meeting in honor of President Lewis's daughter.
Can I make one more announcement? I want to honor her too. But would you, just to remind everybody that Ron Molina, which is one of our great persons and music masters, he was the one that really carried them out for a long time. His services will be at the BD Auditorium on Saturday, 11 o'clock, I believe. And I'm sorry about your mom.
Appreciate it. Great.
So I'll go ahead. Would you like to make the motion?
I will, excuse me. I'm not an emotional person typically, so I don't know how to handle this. I will make the motion to adjourn the meeting in the name of James Etta Watson.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.